I just.
All right, we're going to call the meeting to order and start with roll call.
Mayor Protem Lavarr.
Present.
Councilmember Alfieri is absent. Councilmember Keys.
Here.
Councilmember Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmembers Zulawaga.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Great. Pledge of allegiance. On to number three ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. We have 3A, which is a proclamation recognizing the organizers of the 2021 Old Fashioned Fourth of July Celebration, and Michael Lawson's going to present.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. Just briefly, we, we had a wonderful Fourth of July event here. Something that we went without in 2020 and it came back in 2021 and we had a, a team of folks that helped put that together. Led by Gail Gross and a lot of volunteers and some city staff and some great sponsors. And it was a great turnout. It seemed like everyone seemed to enjoy it. I know I certainly did. And so we wanted to recognize the amount of effort and all the different folks who invested their time in making that happen. So. It, it should be said that it used to be something the city put on in the past. And with COVID and everything else, changes in staffing and budgets, that wasn't something we were going to be able to do. And so we appreciated folks coming in to fill that gap and make that play on behalf of the community. So that was really cool.
All right, now I have the proclamation in front of me, so I'm going to go ahead and read that out loud for the record. The proclamation recognizing organizers of the 2021 Old Fashioned Fourth of July Celebration. Whereas the city of Woodland Park takes pride in celebrating American independence with its annual Old Fashioned Fourth of July Celebration. A longstanding community tradition and whereas the celebration was canceled in 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic at one time uncertain to return for 2021. And whereas Gail Gross of SOAR took the initiative and stepped in to organize the celebration for the first time and invested many hours and our personal resources on behalf of the Woodland Park community. And whereas was assisted by a large group of dedicated volunteers and City of Woodland Park employees. Both leading up to the event and on the day of the event itself. And whereas many sponsors both from within and outside the Woodland Park community pledged financial and in-kind support to help make the celebration a reality. And whereas the celebration was a major success evidenced by the largest attendance that anyone could remember and brought a welcomed sense of normalcy and enjoyment to thousands of attendees. Now therefore, the members of the City of Woodland Park City Council hereby recognize Gail Gross and SOAR event volunteers, city staff, and event sponsors of the 2021 Old Fashioned Fourth of July Celebration. The celebration faithfully honored both of our, our nation and our community, giving the residents of Woodland Park, Teller County, and visitors a much needed opportunity for fun, unity, and patriotism in the midst of a challenging year. On behalf of the Woodland Park community, the council expresses its gratitude for the hard work of all involved in making the celebration a success. Thank you, Gail, very much. Thank you, Gail. I'd like to give you this proclamation as well.
Gail, do you want to? Thank you. To finish, show the proclamation and. Thank you. Many thanks to everyone that helped you.
Speech.
Do I want to make?
Does she want to make a speech?
I don't want. Council wants to know if you want to speak, Gail.
Yeah.
First of all, I want to thank you. I've never had mayor's teams, so I'm very excited about it. And I just want to thank everyone who participated. Yes, it took hours on my part to put it together. But without the people that were participating, it wouldn't have happened. So the, the vendors and the sponsors and everybody that helped out on the day of. And I do have a few of the people here with me today. Everyone was invited, but a lot of people are on vacation and couldn't be here. But we do appreciate the city of Woodland Park and we look forward to expanding upon it for next year and make it, making it even better. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, four additions, selections, or corrections to agenda. None. We've got consent calendar number five. 5A is approval of the August 5th, 2021 regular city council meeting minutes. And B is approval of contracting the amount of $35,496 Timberline Electric. Suzanne, you'd like to take A and then if we have any questions about B, we can.
Sure, we can do that. So what I would look for this evening, council, is a motion to approve the August 5th, 2021 regular city council meeting minutes. I'll make a motion. Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Keys?
Yes.
Lavarr?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. The second item, as Mayor Protem mentioned, that we have on the consent agenda is a contract with Timberline Electrical Control Corp. And Director Kip Wiley is here to answer any questions if you have any particular questions about this contract.
Council, any questions?
Yeah. So Kip, I remember when we did Citizens Academy, they took us through that whole process and I remember seeing those old fashioned radios or whatever, and that was the way of connection. Can you kind of just walk through what the technology difference is from what we're placing it with?
So we are replacing those radios with newer versions. In, in our town, we have to go with the radio frequency because cellular and low frequencies just don't work. And then part of this package is also the controls to that. So we have a redundancy backup to the plant. If the plant computer goes down, we can operate from the control in the SCADA.
Yeah, if I remember, that's how the, that radio control is actually linked to how it actually communicates or operates, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And they said, from what I saw in the proposal, it's going to last another 20 years. Is that right?
That'd be amazing. Well, the original equipment is still in the plant. The plant was built in 97, so it's lasted 25 years. So.
Okay.
We would, we'd hope this does the same.
Okay. And by that time, we might have more sophisticated communication ability.
More than what technology does real pretty quick.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything further? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract in the amount of $35,496 with Timberline Electrical Control Group for the system's controls and data acquisitions upgrade to the water treatment plant.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Keys?
Yes.
Lavarr?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number six, public comment on items not on agenda. Suzanne, do we have anyone this evening?
We do, ma'am. We have two. The first person signed up is in the audience, Kitty Walker. Okay, am I close enough? Let's hear it. Let's say, just say hello. Hello? Am I close enough?
Yes.
There we go. Okay. So my name is Kitty Murray Walker. I'm a resident of Woodland Park. And I would like to start my comments with the Gospel of Matthew, chapter 12, verse 25. And it says, "Jesus knew their thoughts, and he said, 'A kingdom divided will be ruined, and a city or household divided will not stand.'" And I'm bringing this forth as the last few months I've attended the council meetings. And it is apparent that the council is divided. And the members of the Woodland Park citizens and business owners that have addressed the council also appear to be divided against the council or the council against them. So anyway, the Lord gives us solution. Psalms 133 says, "Where there is unity, God commands a blessing." So I believe that the hearts of the council is not for division. And I would like to pray over the council. So Father, I just lift up the Woodland Park City Council right now in Jesus' name. And I thank you, Lord, that you know their thoughts, you know their hearts. And as I believe their hearts are not for division. And I thank you, Lord, that you give them the solution, that unity is the solution. I believe that they would like, they, they want Woodland Park to be blessed. And in unity, Woodland Park is blessed. And the citizens and business owners of Woodland Park want Woodland Park to be blessed. So we just call upon unity and we thank you for your blessings in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Kitty.
Wow, thank you.
Okay. Next, I'm not sure if he's in the audience, but I do have a sign up online for Justin Epperson. Justin, if you are on Zoom, can you please just raise your hand? Okay. No, Justin.
Okay.
That's all the public comment this evening.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to number seven, unfinished business. And at 7A, the approval of legal services agreement between the City of Woodland Park and Wilson and Williams LLP. And the reason this has come back is because I think that council had some questions of the attorneys to get some answers by, um, some false allegations from a critic. And I think the council's had that time. I don't think that we need to wait until November. And I do have something I'd like to read because I'd like the record to accurately reflect the correct law. Because it was posted also in the papers. And it was inaccurate. And I just, normally when it's a person's opinion or interpretation, I don't think it needs to be corrected. But when it's presented as if it was the truth and accurate, it does need to be fixed. So at the August 5th, 2021 regular meeting of the council, it was alleged that the council hadn't held an illegal executive session at its July 1st meeting. And a complaint about the quality of legal advice provided to council by our current city attorneys were made. Several members of council have asked the attorneys to respond to these allegations regarding the legality of the July 1st executive session and to clarify which law was misread and what law actually applied. So the purpose, like I said, of bringing back the attorney's contract and what I'm about to read for the record is the clarification of the law, which was asked for by council and a clarification of our attorney's advice during that meeting. I also want this issue clarified for the public and for the purpose of the record. There were, there was false information relayed in a public meeting and published by our local papers. Had it been one simple opinion or interpretation of the law stated, then there would be no need for clarification. However, even the papers published these false legal, the false legal information and the record must be corrected. And I would like to see the attorney's contract approved this evening. So for clarification, the criticism of council and its legal counsel began by citing the wrong law and then proceeding to excoriate counsel for violating a law that had no application whatsoever to what council was discussing. The critique statute cited was CRS 24-6-402 subsection F2. A portion of the open meeting law that permits executive sessions to discuss public employees. This personnel matters basis for an executive session contains language clarifying that members of the local public body who are convening the executive session aren't personnel of the local government. So discussion of filling a vacancy on a governing body shouldn't occur in an executive session called to discuss personnel matters, personnel matters. We met in executive session to discuss the appointment to fill a vacancy. And appointments to fill vacancies can and commonly are discussed in executive sessions convened on some other basis provided in the open meeting law. Under the assumption that section 402F applied, it was also observed that it sure seemed like it was illegal. And then he encouraged council not to indulge in technical or legal thin ice. So let's clarify that. The executive session held on July 1 was not convened pursuant to section 402F, Roman numeral 2, but rather pursuant to an entirely different subsection. It applies to subsection 402B, which permits executive sessions for the purpose of receiving, receiving legal advice from the city attorney. In this case, concerning potential conflicts of interest of a DDA board appointee. This use of an executive session is common, unremarkable, and completely legal. The second criticism regarding the July 1st executive session focused on the city, our city attorney Nina Williams' response to a question from councilmember Neil, who asked whether going into executive session to discuss the potential conflict was appropriate. Nina responded that there was a legal basis for going into the executive session. But she added, in a, in different communities, different councils have a different preference and customs as to when they choose to go into executive session. Nina expressed this well-understood fact by saying that different councils around Colorado have different feelings about going into executive session. In this advice, Nina was exactly correct. The opens meeting law permits, but never requires executive sessions on specified basis. Advice from attorneys or personal matters, et cetera. So municipal attorneys are regularly asked, are we permitted to go into executive session on this or that basis? Attorneys are not asked, do we have to have an executive session? Because no one is ever required to have an executive session. Councilmember Neil's question combined, is it a legal inquiry with a, is it a good idea inquiry? The first inquiry is for the lawyer to answer, is it legal? But the second inquiry is a policy matter for council to decide, not the lawyers. Respectfully, the legal advice that Nina provided was completely correct. We had the legal right to go into executive session to seek legal advice by our attorney. But did we have to? No. Councilmember Zulawaga could have asked his question on the dais regarding the conflict of interest and Nina would have answered it there. But instead, he asked to go into executive session, which we had the legal right to ask for. The council voted on it, which requires a two-thirds majority, and it passed. Therefore, under section 402B, we adjourned temporarily into the session. Nothing about it was illegal. There was a grave mischaracterization of the law and our attorney's advice in that last meeting. I believe council has now had the time to meet with and ask our attorneys to clarify what had been misspoken and understand that the attorneys really do know that their job. That's why this contract has been brought back before November. I don't think four or more months is needed that, to see that our lawyers who have doctorates in law and years of experience in this topic are less competent than an untrained, unexperienced critic. Jeff Wilson, who represents us, was the lead lobbyist on open meetings at the General Assembly for nearly 30 years. He wrote the first and second editions of the Colorado Municipal League's books on open meetings and open records of Colorado. He knows our open records laws. He knows the open meeting laws. And he certainly knows when we can go into executive session, as does Nina. Nina is also an expert in land use and zoning laws, and together they cover every area of the law that we are concerned with. And they come with stellar reputations. Given that the correct information has now been put forth and it's understood that nothing illegal occurred in regards to an executive session, nor was there improper legal advice given, and council chose by vote to enter executive session. I would really like to recommend that we approve this contract this evening. I would like to recommend it without further ado. However, if council would also like to speak, I welcome that. However, if council would also like to speak, I welcome that. Thank you, Hillary. Counsel, anything further?
It's interesting that all I hear is crickets right now. Dawn, I took your statement to heart. And I want you to know that I have not spoken to anyone here, not to Nina, not to Michael, nobody about this issue after I saw the rendering, the legal opinion that Hillary just saw. The one correspondence I had was with Mayor Protem Labar. When I saw this on the agenda, and I said, "Do we have a problem?" And the conversation we had in the text was simply, "Let's not discuss it. Let's vet it in front of God and everybody and see where it goes." So I was one that voted to hold off the contract. That's how I cast my vote last time. Once I saw a legal interpretation of what we were being accused of, I formed a different opinion on the legal services, and I am ready to cast a different vote. So for the record, those are all of my thoughts. I have discussed this with no one.
Well, I would like to simply start by saying, good folks can disagree. And as technically accurate as all of what you've just read is, I think that the public perception, which is what I see, is that they had no knowledge of what went on in the executive session. So it would only be speculation on their part. But they sensed that something wasn't right in the way we conducted ourselves. And that, I think, is the issue that underlies it. And so to take a legal opinion against one of our citizens, I get it, I understand it. But I think in terms of what the undertone is, of what the people are seeing and saying is, "We want transparency. You didn't do it, counsel." And that's something that we will pay the price for, one way or another. It was not done properly. It was done way out of context of how we normally do business. So I have absolutely nothing against our attorneys, but my vote will reflect the fact that I thought some space in super breathing time was a good thing, and four of you did as well. And I understand why it's changed.
Thank you. Kelly or Catherine?
I got nothing. I would just say that I appreciate your opinion, Robert. It's not one that I share. First, the person in question is not a citizen of Woodland Park, is a business owner. But I have the utmost respect for this firm and think that the two issues are not related. And I don't see what the other issue is because we have responded many times, and there was no shadows or shade for anything else that occurred. It was a vote, and the folks that were appointed were appointed on that vote, and we'll move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. All right. So then, counsel, can I get a motion?
I want a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the legal services agreement between the city of Woodland Park and Wilson and Williams LLP.
I'll second.
Labar?
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
No.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries for one.
Thank you, counsel. And we're going to move on to item number eight, ordinances on initial postings. Eight A's, consider ordinance number 1403. And the presenter is Nina.
Good evening, counsel. This franchise, this agreement renews the gas franchise with Black Hills Energy for 20 years, five years. The prior franchise was for 20 years. Jeff Wilson negotiated. All terms beneficial to the city were carried forward. They originally omitted, but we made sure to get back into the agreement. Just to go over a few points, the franchise continues a 3% franchise fee. That's pretty standard, like a rental fee for the use of city streets for infrastructure. The franchise fee is adjustable every five years if desired. Some new asks from Black Hills in this franchise were primarily towards cooperation when street cuts impact them and their infrastructure and when the city projects, which city projects require relocation of their infrastructure. I believe the Carly Dollar West is attending via Zoom. If there's any other questions for her, she represents the franchise. If I have any questions, or if I don't want to add anything, Michael?
No, the franchise agreement is pretty much the same as it was before, with a few exceptions, like Nina said, just primarily oriented around additional proactive communication between the city and Black Hills Energy. If a major construction project like redoing a street is going to be happening, we need to let Black Hills know so if they need to relocate their infrastructure, they can do so. There's also some new language in there about advanced communication on annexations. If the city does annex new property into its city limits, I need to let Black Hills know with a little bit more advanced notice so they can get those properties set up in their system. But pretty straightforward, 3%, as Nina said, is pretty standard. So not too many changes.
Counsel, any questions?
It's been 3% as long as I've been around, a long time.
I do have a comment because I did receive a comment from a citizen. And here's some transparency, folks. Patricia Stinner, who's sitting in the audience, helped run my campaign. And she is one of my biggest critics. She will challenge me on anything. And she asked me to look into some language in this particular contract, which I did. Now, a little bit is because I have studied law, I'm aware that you don't list negatives, I guess is the best way. And I don't know the exact legal term for it, Nina. I'm going to struggle a little bit.
You do.
It has to do with, the document is giving the franchise the access over public right-of-ways. The question that I was asked had to do with, "What about private right-of-ways or private easements?" Because we are not specifically putting it into the contract. That does not imply that it's there. So by the mere fact that it's not in the contract, it means it's not implied that they get easements over, they have the rights to go on private easements. And I think I've captured that, and I hope I've captured the concern adequately, and I've addressed it to everybody if you had a similar concern over that language. And I'm kind of a head nod, are you comfortable with the explanation? Okay. It's up to the mayor, Protem, with the, there's public comment.
Sure, that's fine. You can come up to the podium if you'd like.
Good evening, counsel, citizens. Patricia Stinner, Woodland Park. So I hearken back to a similar franchise agreement that came at an awkward time for the franchise because at that time in 2015, when peak internet approached the city, internet and fiber optics were not yet legally recognized as utilities. They are now. They are legal public utility functions. So when peak internet operated on their agreement with the city, they did come through our public easements. And I allowed them to, I invited them to. I thought that fiber optic was going to improve everybody's property values. And it was a little intrusive, they're water-boring, damaged some things. They did cause some erosion that they did not come back and repair, not on my property. They repaired my property. But I continued to hear people complain about those two or three years when they were active. And this isn't a slight on peak internet. They certainly went through the right channels. They received the city administration permission to access the easements. The easements were not specifically defined, nor acknowledged, nor addressed in that agreement. Similarly, I don't believe private easements are addressed in the old TDS agreements or any of the other agreements. Easement law has changed. It's come to my attention because I was doing my diligence in finding out about the whole fiber optic thing coming through my private easement. And I was told five years ago that if a subdivision is planted with utility easements, those utility easements are presumed to be for that development. And what we saw coming in, in 2015, 2016, 2017, we saw the existing properties of Northwoods sacrificing and being burdened by utility installment for future developments that still aren't developed. So I understand what you're saying, Councilman Neil, and I thank you on such short notice. By the way, Mr. Neil didn't get this letter until like 15 minutes before the meeting or something. It caught me off guard that this was going to be coming up tonight. But I think you understand my concerns. The private easements were not specifically addressed nor defined, nor specifically omitted. And peak internet did use our private easements. And not all citizens were okay with that. I'm wondering if we can prevent future turmoil. And I am not a no-growth person. As I said, I invited peak internet to come through my property and to bore through my property and to have access through my property to get to another property. And that's when I got in trouble with another developer because they used access to my property they didn't otherwise legally have. So private easements, I think, should remain private. Seeing fiber optic buried in the ground is a lot different than a gas line coming in. So I ask counsel to please work towards the effort of protecting our private easements in the city for the residents of City Park, not just the residents, but for the developers as well. And please look into that before you sign this agreement. That's all I'm asking. And Councilman Neil, thank you. I understand what you're saying. You asked me if I accept your statement. Can I live with it? Absolutely. I'm just asking for counsel to be a little more astute and just take into consideration that private easements might be jeopardized here.
Mayor Protem, may I respond?
Sure.
Since this is initial posting?
Yes.
And we're going to take a vote whether to move it to the next phase. May I make a commitment to you that I will sit with the attorney and if necessary, or the city staff, I guess it is, would be the appropriate people. Sally, I'm kind of watching your head shake. And if we need to, we'll get a Zoom call and bring you in so that if there is some language that would make you more comfortable or we feel is appropriate. I'm not making any promises. I'm just saying I'll facilitate a follow-up since we are...
Certainly, that's more than I could ask. And I'm not trying to be an obstructionist. I'm not trying to put a damper on the agreement. Obviously, we need that agreement.
Right.
I'm just asking if we can do it better.
Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
So Patricia, I'd like to piggyback on what you said. I have a friend down in Colorado Springs, and he just spent $10,000 on his driveway. And the fiber optics came through, and they wanted to bore through his property. They talked to him, they negotiated what it was supposed to be. And then when the workers came, they totally changed the plan. So the bore, which was shallower than was proposed, and it was going to affect his brand-new work. So he had a heck of a fight. And as far as I know, that's not even resolved yet in terms of getting satisfaction to the protection of his own property. They had the right to come through the easement, but he had no say in it. So I think you're making a really good point.
Well, thank you. I know that by standard anymore, utilities go in through the street easements. Those are public easements, different from private easements. When you have a utility coming through people's backyards and destroying landscape and not coming back because there was not foresight enough to put repercussions in for the utility that came through, what if you damage property? You're going to fix it. That wasn't in there. It was never addressed. So again, I'm not trying to be an obstructionist to Black Hills Energy to come through. They need to develop. We have populations growing. I'm just asking for city council to please put some thought into protecting our private easements. We do have public right-of-ways. Most paved streets and even dirt alleys have easements that are broader than the street itself. And perhaps your friend's driveway was paved over one of those easements. I don't know the situation.
Sidewalk easement.
Okay, well, and a sidewalk is a public right-of-way. So anyway, I appreciate that counsel let me come in tonight and speak. I wasn't expecting to. So, and thank you, Councilman Neil. Thank you, Robert Zulawaga also.
And I'll be willing to, anything that I do, definitely a chair, because I think your concerns are very valid also. We can work kind of with the attorneys in the city.
Well, I have a second. I have a second question. I don't know if this is directed at you, Michael, or whether this is in the law. So this has been going for 25 years. They have a 3% fee that they pay us for that use. Has a costing been done by the treasury, by the finance department to see whether that is offsetting the cost to the city? And whether that is still a profitable margin or a fair margin for the city? Or have we just assumed 3% is fine, and we're just going ahead?
As far as I know, there's been no analysis done. I'm not sure if it's possible to quantify the impact.
This is a rent. It's not like a construction project or something that we're incurring costs that need to be covered. It's a rental for the use of our public right-of-ways. So it's not a cost recovery position? Does that make sense for you?
It makes sense, but it doesn't cost us anything when they come in and use that easement. Does it cost the city any money at any point?
I think so.
No? Okay, well, I could, that's...
And it's just generally to recoup the cost of wear and tear on city infrastructure is generally what franchise fees are.
Anything further?
Oh, yes, I know, you know, Rest is going to speak with Sally to explain, and you'll sit down, you know, with your constituents. But I just wanted to point out, you know, this is an agreement with the city. And in the first section, franchise granted, it's granted on present and future streets, alleys, avenues, bridges, public right-of-ways and public easements of the city. So it quantifies or explains that it's a public, yeah, anything public.
So then the question is, quite like, has been presented here, when it comes to having to go across private land, what is the protocol? What's the law say in terms of that access? What if, for example, Ms. Stinner said, "No, I don't want you doing that this time"? What would be the impact? The city said, "Yes," but the private homeowner said, "No."
Well, we're granting the franchise on public streets, right-of-ways. I can't speak to each individual private property because they might already have utility easements that are on the property when they purchased the property, but...
So does that make that utility easement? Is the city easement shared with the homeowner? So it's a moot point? Is that really the point?
It depends on each property. But we'll have a better, I guess, explanation point out, you know, which sections have this type of provision that it makes sure that everyone is comfortable, fully comfortable that it's over public right-of-ways and public easements that already exist.
All right, it's fine.
I just don't, I guess I'm having, struggling to see where our authority lies in private easements. I have a private utility easement on my private property. And if there's something going through there, I'm notified of that. But I knew that that easement was there when I purchased the property. And so I accepted the property with that knowledge and condition of the property and know that I can't put any permanent structures there that would inhibit the access of utilities to run through there because it is a, and it's recorded, it's on the plat, it's a utility easement. So I struggle to see the relevance of the city's public right-of-ways, which this franchise agreement addresses, and the public right, or the private right-of-ways, because I don't see them as being related.
I agree.
This is a 25-year-old contract. And once again, only because I know personally Ms. Stinner has an issue at her, is that your backyard, side yard, whatever, between you and...
It's the backyard, yes.
Your backyard? And it's a huge, big old pit. Now, I don't know whether the cause of that was by a utilities company or not. But if it's been 25 years and we haven't challenged how it's happening and there is an issue, like, if you want to explain what's in your backyard, go ahead, or in that easement area there. But from what I know, that the city can't get in there and fix it. I don't know all the details of it, but it's like, it's an issue to those homeowners, and it's not resolved. I don't know all the details of it, but it's like, it's, it's an issue to those homeowners and it's not resolved. So if this 25 year old contract is plays into some of those things that aren't being resolved, is it value to look at it? That's my only.
Yeah. And we would have as a city, as you're all saying, we don't have the authority to, um, grant anything over a private easement. And this is clear that it's about streets, alleys, avenues, bridges, public right of ways, public easements. I can't say that, I know my property, this utility easement's over that I purchased, you know, with, with the knowledge of, but that's not a city easement over the private property. This is, you know, the city's is, is, um, the party to this contract. And when it says versus franchise granted, it's clear that it's only public right of ways, public easements. In fact, it says public easement, doesn't include private easements. We have no rights, you know, um, to that. It says streets, alleys, avenues, bridges, public right of ways and public easements.
Okay. So it's clearly not, it's not private.
And Tricia, understand I'm not belittling or, or making it any less of your concerns. By any way, I just think that they belong in a different place because this is strictly over public right of way easements and access.
Thank you, Councilman K. So I, I, I understand the intent of, of your comment. Again, I repeat, private property was not specifically addressed in the peak internet negotiations. They came through private property and citizens did not have a say about it. Now, most citizens were, it, it just like myself, it wasn't a problem. The drainage thing, that's a problem. But that came, that preceded me. Okay. So I bought the property like you know about your easements. What we are finding in Colorado law, and this is something, I'm not an attorney and I'm not going to pretend to be one. But one of the issues I would like to see council address, or at least entertain and consider, is easement law has changed in Colorado with the introduction of the expansion of fracking. What used to be an easement in perpetuity in Colorado law apparently is no longer in perpetuity. It has a lifespan of 15 to 20 years. Therefore, if you're in a subdivision that was planted into the years 2000 or earlier and those utility easements have not been built, there's no infrastructure within the easement. Those property owners could very well come to you and say, my attorney's recommending that I close off that easement. And for Peak Internet, would I do that? No, I invited them onto my property. For a gas line, I might think twice.
Oh, I would too.
So anyway, that's all that's, I'm just asking you to consider it. I don't have a right or wrong answer. So thank you. I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, can I get a motion?
No, it's a long one, but I'll go ahead and make it. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve the initial posting of ordinance number 1403, series 2021, granting Black Hills Colorado Gas Incorporated, DBA Black Hills Energy, its leases, successors and assigns a natural gas franchise and the authority to construct, operate, maintain and extend a natural gas distribution plant and system, granting the right to use the streets, alleys and other public places within the present or future corporate limits of the city of Woodland Park and sent the public hearing for September 2nd, 2021.
Very good.
I'll second.
Nikai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluwaka?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to nine public hearings, we've got nine A for, um, to approve number 1401, series 2021, an ordinance approving the purchase of certain water shares and Kip Wiley is presenting.
Thank you, council, before you tonight, ordinance 1401. As you recall, on August 5th, 2021, you approved resolution 878 for the purchase of this water share. And this is coming back forward, forward to you because water shares are considered real property and you need to accept it as that real property. So before you tonight, and I recommend approval of ordinance 1401 for the point six shares in Twin Lakes Reservoir and, and Colorado Canal Company. And, uh, recommend approval after the public hearing.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion, please? Oh, yeah.
It's okay.
Suzanne, do you have anyone online?
No ma'am.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience? Seeing none, how may, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, to approve number 1401, series 2021, and ordinance approving the purchase of certain water shares.
I did cheat.
You know, you don't have to read the whole thing.
Can I get a second?
Well, second.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluwaka?
Yes.
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Yep. And now moving on to nine B's, approval of ordinance 1402, series 2021 to vacate common lot lines and the presenter is Sally Riley. And I'd just like to briefly remind council, this is quasi judicial. Please stick to this topic and this topic currently.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Labar. This is ordinance 1402 to vacate a common lot line between and easements between lot 14C in Fairway Pines filing number 2C, which is 240, yeah, Iron Eagle Point and Lot 15, which is Fairway Pines filing number two and addressed as 250 Eagle, Iron Eagle Point as requested by John Paul and Jill Schulman. They are the property owners and this is in a PUD in Fairway Pines. So sharing the exhibit, this is a private access easement that dead ends, so to speak, at these two lots. The Schulmans have purchased both Lot 14C and Lot 15. They intend to build a home after these lots are combined. So as a result, the common lot line and the easements, these are public easements across private property, uh, are proposed to be vacated. Think the Schulmans were going to be here, but I'm right, right behind me. So the owners are here if you have any questions of them. Staff does recommend approval and all the utility companies have reviewed this as well as our own staff and recommend approval.
And counsel, just briefly for the record, I did sell those lots, but I worked for the seller, not the buyers. And I have no interest in these lots whatsoever. So I just want that on the record. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments or would you like to hear from the, the party at all?
I think for the record, I think I've met them and they don't even know it. I walk my dog by there. You, you have that RV right now. Yeah. We're, we're future neighbors. Hello. So it's full disclosure, they're my neighbor.
Very good. Counsel, can I get a motion for approval then?
Oh, public hearing.
Every time, every time.
We're here for you.
Suzanne, do you have anyone online?
No ma'am.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience? Seeing none, now may I please have the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1402, series 2021, to vacate the common lot line in public utilities and drainage of private access easements as described in the presentation by the planning director. My second.
Zuluwaka?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thanks, Sally. All right, moving on to 10, new business. We have 10A approval of resolution number 881 and Kip Wiley is presenting that as well.
Thank you. Before council's resolution 881 to allocate 32 taps to a, this project on Brecken Heights. Uh, the reason this comes to council is any multi-family project, triplex or larger taps can be allocated because in 1997, our tap management plan limited the number of taps you could sell, um, to a developer or a builder in any given month. And this allows for multi-family projects to build multiple, uh, units at the same time. So before you tonight is 32 taps. These taps would come out of the multi-family bank. Currently, the multi-family bank has 64 taps in it. Where do we get those taps? Those come from the single family bank. So council also has to approve transfer from the single family bank to the multi-family bank. First of the year, when we did the, the annual allotment, uh, we had around 503 taps. Don't quote me on the number, um, in the single family bank. And we had, um, we had additional taps in the multi-family bank. But to date, uh, council has already approved eight multi-family taps for, um, a project on Baldwin Street. Uh, and then this would also come out of that same bank. Uh, what's interesting, I was just telling Sally is it's the year of 32. We've sold 32 taps so far this year. We are requesting 32 taps for this project and we have 32 taps left in the multi-family bank.
Good job.
Yeah, kind of interesting fact. Sorry. So, uh, the developer has requested these taps. There is a list of criteria that were established. There are 11 criteria and then the staff report I went through and, and indicated which criterias they met. Uh, they, they met most of the criteria and not all, but most, there is no, uh, definition on if they even have to meet them all or any. So it is up to council's decision on whether or not to allocate these taps to this project. Uh, this project is 16 duplexes that are built on a crawl space. They consist of about 1,400 square feet. 484 square feet is garage space. It's approximately a two car garage. Uh, there are two floor plans available that include two or three bedroom units with two bathrooms. Next year finishes will be stucco and stone and available in earth tone colors. Brecken Court also will be a road that's put in with five foot sidewalks and access to additional sidewalks that are in the area with connection to, uh, across the street, which would be Walmart. I'm, I'm here to answer any questions, but staff has looked at this and recommends approval for the 32 tap allocations.
Chair, council?
Yeah, I have one question, Kip. On the, um, the background information that was provided under the conditions of approval, there's a sentence that says the developer is requesting the approval of 53 water tap allocations for the multi-family project. Can you connect the dots in my head, 53 versus the 32?
Yep, that is a typo in my staff report. The resolution is correct. Uh, so thank you for pointing that out. And I swear I put in 32, but.
Okay, so 32 is that number, correct.
Way to go.
I just have one comment just for the record. Um, this development is going in across the park from my house. So if anybody thinks I'm going to be biased, let me know.
So, um, back to your 32. So do you see any other, uh, development happening that's going to require more allocation of multi-family taps this year?
Great question. Uh, if my crystal ball was that clear, I would not be sitting here. However, what is interesting about this project, and I failed to point this out, is the developer actually could build up to 80 units on two lots here. They are basically dedicating one lot to the city that they could have built a number of lots or units on. And then even this lot one, where the 32 units are going, they could build up to, I believe it was 46. So we are actually getting units back into our bank with this development.
Yeah, I recall when this was before, it's a while ago, I, I liked this development. I thought it was very, uh, very sound. So my question was simply with regards, yeah, forward moving, it simply means it's got to come back to council to allocate more into multi-family if there's going to be more this year.
Uh, for a different development.
For any other, for any other.
Anything triplex or larger.
Okay. Great. No other questions?
Thank you.
Counsel, I think further. Can I get a motion?
Oh, public hearing. Suzanne, do you have anyone?
No ma'am.
Is there anyone in the audience?
Okay, seeing none, now we have a motion.
I will move to approve resolution number 881, series 2021, establishing 32 multi-family residential water tap allotments for lot one of Brecken Heights.
Second one.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluwaka?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. Counsel, we're at number 11 already.
That's six minutes. Remember I said, no, it won't be 30 minutes.
All right, 11 reports. I don't have any special announcements.
Just, um, the motorcycle.
That's right.
Yeah.
The Veterans Rally, uh, is, um, Saturday and I think Kelly.
Tomorrow.
Well, it's also tomorrow. Yeah. So I was going to give that to you. So.
I'm happy to.
Good.
Um, the 39th annual 2021 salute to American Veterans Rally and the, is it the 30th, 29th, uh, POW MIA recognition ride to Cripple Creek or through Cripple Creek is this weekend, beginning tomorrow afternoon. They will have the red T-shirt giveaway, uh, in the park. You'll probably notice there were some tents and things going up in the north end of the park in preparation for the rally. It's, it's a, a very timely celebration of our veterans in our community, in our state, in our country. Um, we've seen some pretty disturbing things as of late going on. And, um, I think there's a number of veterans that have served that are feeling some disappointment or some different feelings right now. So it's a great opportunity to honor those that have served and protected our freedoms. There will be a boatload of them here over the weekend. So please thank them when you see them for their service. Join us if you can. The, tomorrow afternoon is Friday in the park. There's vendors, there is going to, and Saturday is the ride. We are gathering it between 7:30, the ride will leave promptly at 10 o'clock. The last registered motorcycle will be, rider will be at night at, uh, 9:30 promptly leaving at 10. The roads will be blocked and Highway 24 blocked from 9:30 until about 10:45, I believe. So plan accordingly. We all know that, we all know how to get around town without the use of 24. Go east and you'll get behind them. Um, and then the rally in town on Saturday and the ceremonies, they are actually giving away a modified motorcycle, three wheeler for a veteran that has many different special needs. They've flown him in, I believe from Chicago to honor him by presenting that motorcycle to him, getting him back on the road, um, here at our rally. So that'll be a, a tearjerker, I'm sure. And then there will be bands, there will be a beer garden, there will be vendors and good camaraderie and opportunities to thank those that have served our country. So I hope to see you all there. I won't be riding this year, but, um, look forward to celebrating with everyone.
Thank you, Hillary. I don't have anything.
I had two liaison meetings. The first one was a special meeting for the, um, Historic Preservation Committee on August 9th. It was a very simple meeting, uh, in which a historical building located at 720 West Highway 24 was requesting to re-roof, uh, the building. It was approved. That's all I have for the historic preservation. In terms of the DDA, we had a meeting this past Tuesday. It was a little confusing. At first it was going to be a workshop that it was announced as a special meeting. We did go through the process of voting to make sure, went back to a workshop status officially. Uh, no business was conducted. There is a lot of topics, um, that, um, are under consideration. Nothing that I, I'm going to go into any depth for sake of time. Yeah.
Um, but yeah, firstly, with regards to the Veterans Rally, if any of you know any veterans who are struggling with post-traumatic syndrome or depression or suicide or anything like that. One of our prior council members, Paul Sanya is organized, is, uh, part of a team who's organizing. One of our prior council members, Paul Sanya, is part of a team who's organizing a retreat, fishing, kayaking, stuff like that. I'm not sure when the closure date of applications is, but it's coming up here in September. The event's coming up September. So if you do want to refer somebody, either contact me or Paul. Paul probably is a direct one, but if you don't have his contact information. Secondly, I also am excited to see how this maiden voyage for the Veterans Rally flies here in Woodland Park. So it'll be an experiment and the debriefing afterwards to see how we all do with it. So I welcome them with open arms and look forward to what's going to happen. As far as a PPACG, some interesting workshops have been happening this week, educating Coloradans about some laws that are coming down with regards electric vehicles, with regards transport, train transport and stuff like that. A little disturbing, a number of us were concerned that these mandates are coming down from the state to turn the state majority of electric vehicles in a short period of time. And forgetting the fact that as a, at least one of my concerns was you start making all these electric vehicles, well, all the batteries are manufactured in China. So what's that do for energy independence? What's that do for security? Secondly, is all issue of the disposal of the batteries. You know, nothing said about it. Oh, yeah, it's free energy. It's clean energy, but it's not when you look at the recycle end of it. So those issues haven't really been discussed. And there was a number of people on the PPAG who had different tactful questions about where this is all going. So that's one. And then, of course, like here we are where it's so cold, a battery's supposed to last three hundred, three hundred miles. But when it gets cold, it's not going to go that far. And just imagine yourself in a snowdrift with your battery flat. So there's a few things that don't seem to be worked out, but it's coming our way. The second one is electric train, or not electric trains, is trains across the state. And there's a whole deal with what that infrastructure is going to look like. It's not going to affect us. But anyway, that's all from PPACG. And I let go. Bye.
Mayor Protam Labar, I did forget one thing from my liaison. And it didn't occur during the workshop, but as liaison, I wanted to report that Elijah Murphy did resign effective yesterday per the reasons that he stated at the last council meeting. I had reached out to him and asked him to reconsider. I think he's got some concerns that I too have and was hoping that we could put both sides of, you know, the division of the city into the room and work together and work through it to see that people on both sides are hardworking. He reconsidered, but still stood on his resignation and was effective as of yesterday.
Very good. And Suzanne, that reminds us that we need to advertise both positions now.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Nina.
I don't have a report, but I just wanted to thank the council for their faith in us, for the city attorney. When we first were asked to apply in February, a lot of people warned us about the challenge, but it's something that isn't, to say the least. But it's something that's important to us. It's part of our mission, why we do this work, especially where we embrace the challenge, but also where we see that there's, you know, the impact that you all collectively making and you all are, you know, really making steps, good, really good steps for that towards your community. And you have a really good staff that we're also honored to work with. So thank you very much. And also, I think you all met Elliott Browning, he's our new attorney. So now he has started, we had meetings about half of the day with different staff and working on different things. So we really enjoy working here and thank you.
Thank you. Nina, is he old enough to have gone to school and really graduated?
He didn't know what ET was. But that's a compliment. Yes, he's got, I've been alive for about two years, got driven in Colorado, so.
Very good.
Welcome, Hillary. And yes, welcome.
So first a question for the council, very important question. What is the difference between a well dressed man on a bicycle and a poorly dressed man on a tricycle? One wheel, a tire.
It's my third time hearing that joke.
All right. All right. In a little bit more serious vein, if you'd like to know more about the Veterans Rally, there's a really helpful website, theveteransrally.org. Has a lot of details about the ride itself. It has a very well detailed program in terms of the timing and everything, and I believe routes may be on here as well. A list of closures and locations of closures are on the city's website, city-woodlandpark.org. So some final helpful resources for you. We are full on the Citizens Academy. We filled up quite quickly. And so we do have a waiting list. The waiting list is also quite long. But you know, there's always a chance. But we thank folks who have signed up and taken interest in that. That's really exciting. The Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Community Cleanup is Saturday, August twenty eighth from nine to twelve. Registration will start at eight thirty in the morning at the U-Pass Cultural Center Midland Pavilion. So we'll get another shot at cleaning up our community. It went really well last time. We hope to see you there. Thank you for considering that. And then finally, a really exciting note to end on, sales tax and lodging tax. That, you know, it actually is kind of exciting in a sense. The city is doing pretty well in these areas. Sales tax year to date is up thirteen point four percent over twenty twenty. Things slowed down a little bit in May of this year, you know, seven point six percent growth in May. Still pretty good. But we've, in June, we started seeing this double digit year over year growth again. So things continue to do well here. I know that there was a fifteen point eight percent increase over June of last year for sales tax, just for the month of June. As we all know and probably are feeling at this point, inflation's a big part of that. The consumer pricing decks increased five point four percent over the twelve months prior, which is the biggest increase since August of two thousand and eight. And so I found some yes, yes. I found it interesting that the price for used cars has increased forty one point seven percent over twelve months prior. Sell our cars, sell our houses. I just, we'll just have to walk and live camp, go camp.
With that.
Yes. And so energy costs obviously are going up across the board too, regardless of what they are. So on lodging tax, it's much the same story. Year to date, we're up sixty eight and a half percent through the end of June over twenty twenty. We're going to start to see some kind of stabilization in that lodging tax. We were having triple digit growth over last year because, if you all recall, we've told you for months about microtel opening and then having this lodging rev software system to better capture lodging tax revenues. Well, it's been a year since then. And so we're kind of, we're kind of doing one of these leveling off things. That said, we still have lodging tax increase by ten point seven percent in the month of June.
Well, and wasn't lodging still closed down pretty much at this point last year? Or had we started to open again? I don't remember. You know, we forget those awful things that happen in our lives.
Deb Miller is shaking her head no, but.
Thank you, Debbie. Were we okay? Thank you.
So.
I should have known she would know.
So even better news on that point. So people are coming to Woodland Park. They're staying in Woodland Park and hopefully, well, they're spending money in Woodland Park. I mean, here it is. So and that's, those are the highlights. We do, of course, have supporting documentation if you like. That's all I got.
Finance director's on soon.
Oh, our brand new finance director, this is Dave Forre, from Mr. Vassalotti. He has joined us online. He's jumping in with both feet, hair on fire, no doubt, but he's got a great attitude. You never know it. I don't know if Aaron can speak, but I don't know if I want to put him on the spot either. But he, Aaron is working remotely for us at the time. As all of us know, it's kind of difficult to find housing in this area right now. And so he's working through that. He's doing his best. But he's, he's already made great contributions. He's teaching me stuff about accounting already. And so I'm grateful for that in a matter of speaking. But he knows it all. So we're grateful to have him.
Awesome. Great. Anything further?
All right, and this meeting is adjourned.